This conference will now be recorded.
Let's check in, are we still all on?
We are still on, we're waiting for Alderman Frazier to call in.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Everybody's still on.
Okay, thank you.
Yes ma'am. Okay, while we're waiting, uh, let... Who is that? Who is that?
I was gonna ask Alderman Mathis, do you have a, do you have a laptop?
I'm sorry, do I have what?
Do you have your laptop, um, on your computer logged in as well as your phone?
Oh, I have my, I have the agenda up on my tablet, I'm looking at it.
Okay, okay. Did we get Alderman Frazier in?
Right here.
Okay.
Oh, okay, Alderman Frazier's here?
Yes.
Oh, okay, alright, great. Alright, uh, so, let me just, um, preface this meeting by letting you know that this meeting is being recorded, uh, and it will be posted on the city's website immediately after the meeting adjourns. So at this time, I'm going to, uh, call the special call meeting, which is a virtual teleconference meeting of the mayor board of Aldermen, uh, March 26th, the year of our Lord 2020, uh, and the time is, uh, 10:08 a.m. I'm calling the meeting to order. Uh, at this time, I ask that we pause for a few moments of silent prayer. Thank you, and I'm in. At this time, I am asking Alderman Sarah Carter Smith if you would lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Smith. Next, will the city clerk perform the roll call?
Yes, Mayor, Alderman Mathis? Here. Alderman Smith, here. Alderman Irvin, here. Alderman Frazier?
Here.
Alderman Davis?
Here.
And Alderman Dillard?
Here.
All present, Mayor.
Also, uh, let the minutes reflect, uh, that all Aldermen are present, and also, uh, let the minutes reflect, and if you would confirm it, that the city attorney is on the call.
Yes, sir.
I'm on the call.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item on the agenda, request by Magnolia Bluffs Casino to forbear on April lease payment, and to allow the casino to pay one-third of the April lease payment in May, and all of the May payment, and to pay one-third of the April lease payment in June, and all of the June payment, and to pay one-third of the April payment in July, and all of the July payment. On yesterday, uh, the city clerk and myself, we met. Uh, she did her due diligence and research, and, uh, she, uh, conveyed to me that she felt comfortable, uh, that the city will have enough revenue in order to underwrite, uh, our bills and our payroll. Will you confirm that, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, that's correct.
Mr. Mayor? Uh, yes, Mr. Dillard?
Out of an abundance precaution of any conflicts, I am going to ask to be recused from this discussion.
Let the minutes reflect that Alderman Dillard is being recused and will not participate in the discussion, uh, based on the request of Magnolia Bluffs Casino.
Yes, sir.
What's the, uh, pleasure of the board based on the request?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Mathis?
I have a question before we get into the motion, um, and, and I guess it goes to the attorney and to you all, you and the city clerk. Um, if Magnolia Bluffs Casino receives any relief from the federal government, and I was listening just before I came on the call, I think they're getting ready to vote, uh, very closely in terms of what they're gonna do. Um, any, have we looked at any of the interest that would be incurred by that amount spread over three months? And could we, we ask, I'm just asking a question, I wanna help them out. But is there a possibility of us getting that when we get the, uh, last payment?
Okay, uh, yes, uh, city attorney, do you want to, uh, respond?
I'm not sure I understood the question, um...
The question is, if, if, yeah, and only if, the, uh, Congress passes the relief deal, and, uh, one of the, uh, businesses that relief, that gets money from the relief deal, if they are made whole, can we, uh, charge any interest that would have incurred for those, that, for that payment over the three months? And have we discussed that?
If you, uh, if the board decides to agree to, uh, allow forbear on this April payment, I think you can condition that, um, interest being paid at such time as they are provided any relief, uh, from the federal government, you know, for, for being...
Right, with the understanding that if they don't receive any, we, we won't get it, we're not asking for it. I'm just saying if they do, that's, that's the only thing I mean.
That's right, that's right, and I, um, while I'm, while we're discussing this, I'll, I'll just go ahead and point out, I, I emailed, um, the state attorney's office, uh, with respect to whether or not the city had the authority to actually forbear on the April payment, and basically, Mark Johnson sent me an email saying, "If the lease provided for, um, then, then the city could, uh, but if not, you might have to amend the lease." The lease didn't specifically have any terminology with respect to, uh, you know, any extensions of payment on certain conditions. There is a force majeure clause in the lease, which is force majeure, like defines force majeure as being a catastrophic, uh, catastr- catastrophic event outside the control of the party, prohibiting or significantly hindering the operation of any part of the casino establishment and related development contemplated by the agreement, which could not have been prevented by exercise of due care, which I think this obviously would be a force majeure event, and, uh, I, I think that the city, i- i- it, it, the city indeed wants to try to do this, that in the motion, it would be that we're proceeding under the force majeure clause of the lease, and amended to the extent that, um, the city needs to allow this forbearance for this period of time, with the condition that the city will receive any, uh, interest payments at the legal rate under the code of mis- uh, Mississippi code, uh, for the time period that, that they're relieved of the payment.
If they receive relief from the federal government.
Right, right.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes, Ms. Smith. Uh, let me remind all other members to put their phones on mute while a, uh, person is participating. It helps to cut back on the background noise, please. Alright, Ms. Smith, proceed.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm just, I don't know how we would set an interest rate, I mean, most people are advising no interest rates pretty much during this time, um, because of what's going on with the situation with the coronavirus and, um, the economy in general, so I don't even, you know, who would set, how would we decide what interest rate? It just seems, I don't know, like that, to me, doesn't, I don't feel like how that would fit. If somebody wants to tell me how it would, how we would do that, um, I'm willing to listen. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, some time, I...
Okay, uh, uh, Ms. Mathis, uh, and all of us put your phones on mute.
Yeah, I was simply asking a question as a thought, and the only reason is because it is, uh, a contractual agreement. Uh, I think what, and I, I have no problems not doing it, I'm just throwing it out for information because it is a contractual agreement. We are gonna, uh, adhere to the agreement and try to give them all the relief we can give them. But if they in turn got relief, that's what I was asking about, only if they in turn got relief, then it wouldn't be us setting the interest rate, we would probably adopt whatever the banks are doing for other businesses. And if they're not doing anything, of course, then we couldn't do anything. But I can, I'm just asking a question, that's why I didn't wanna make it in terms of a motion, I asked a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, uh, yes, uh, Mr. Frazier?
Uh, I was just like to ask, I'm just asking a question. Have any other, do we know if any other casino in the state is, is, uh, trying to do the same thing to Magnolia Bluffs, uh, asking for some relief from their payment?
Repeat your question, I'm sorry, Mr. Frazier, and try to speak clearly.
My, my question is, is do we know if any other casinos in the state are asking for any kind of relief from their lease payment, uh, uh, remotely, whatever?
Uh, my answer to that, uh, no, I, I have not, I have not done any research to find out if there are any other casinos that are leasing from, uh, government, like, uh, a local government, a county or city, so I really don't know, uh, the answer to that question.
So, here's the, I, I know, uh, I know that, uh, as, as Ms. Mathis said, I, I, it's like an interesting question. If the government is bailing out the, bailing out these companies and stuff, is there, I understand what you're saying about trying to, we can get some relief, but this is something that I think that, that the city in turn needs to research for more in order, in order to provide help for the city and the casino. I'm like Ald- Alderman Mathis, I have no, uh, I'm, I'm in favor of helping the casino out because we, we need, because it's one of our, like, our states on our top industry, but we also got to look out for the benefit of the city.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Frazier. Uh, let me ask, uh, the city attorney. Uh, based on your research, Bob, uh, can the board grant this forbearance to the casino? Uh, bottom line, or is there something that we have to do before the forbearance is granted?
Well, as I stated a few minutes ago, I can conclude in the motion, the, uh, the, the motion would have to include that the, that the city is proceeding under the force majeure clause of the lease and granting an amendment to the lease to provide for this, uh, forbearance of the April payment under the terms that is set forth in the resolution, that they'll be able to, uh, make that, that payment a third in April 30th, May 30th, and June, and that they will pay interest at the legal rate, or we could, and we could provide in there that it would be, uh, an interest rate that's approved by the state attorney's office. But to me, uh, there's no other way to pick a, uh, an interest rate other than what the code provides for at this time, and if the state attorney's office authorizes us to charge less, and the board can make that determination at a later, you know, when that event occurs, I don't know how long it'll take for us to find out whether or not the casinos are even gonna get any relief under this, um, under the legislation that was passed by Congress. But I...
Okay, thank you.
I was gonna say, in my response from Mark Johnson, he did not indicate that there were any other casinos that had brought that to his attention.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, thank you. Uh, so, it would be my recommendation, uh, to the board that we proceed, uh, with granting the forbearance based on the statement that the city attorney has made that we put all of those items in place in respect to the resolution. Uh, Ms. Smith, you have a question? Is there a second?
Second, second.
Okay, uh, it's been moved by Alderman Mathis, second by Alderman Frazier. Um, unreadiness on the motion.
Yes, uh, yes, Ms. Mathis.
Mr. Frazier?
Mr. Dillard, like I said, I, I really need you to, uh, uh, I really, I really need you to do some research on because we don't want, and I still feel the way, I don't want the federal government to come back and bail them out, bail them out too, and we don't get nothing on the bottom end. So, I would, I would just like you to do a little more, if we can get open, you think we can get open from the attorney's office, or what?
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yes, who is this?
Alderman Irvin, I've been trying to come in for the last two, three minutes, but thank you.
Okay, I didn't hear you, I didn't hear you, okay. Uh, Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, I just wanted to say, I do agree with, uh, Alderman Smith that, uh, we need to look at if other financial institutes are being, um, relieved of their interest rates and all student loans and all of that, that is something that we do need to consider as well. And, um, to allow the attorney to continue with research, however, I just think we need to move forward with the motion as we just agreed upon today.
Okay, uh, further unreadness. If there be none, uh, Alderman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Uh...
Alderman Sarah Carter Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman, Alderman Irvin, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard has recused himself, he's not participating in the discussion, uh, so therefore, it passes by a majority, uh, of the vote, uh, so it has been so ordered.
Mr. Mayor, may I point out one quick thing?
Uh, yes, Ms. Smith?
It's something that just came to my mind, um, when I was thinking about it over the last day, uh, was that with our, the lag on the sales tax revenue decline will come in a few months, so this extra revenue actually will probably help us in the long run, that it is a little bit later. That is one good point with this, um, because we will, you know, it's gonna take a few months before we really see this really awful decrease in sales tax revenue that we're gonna see.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next item on the agenda, uh, amending resolution of the mayor board of Aldermen of the city of Natchez, Mississippi, declaring stay-at-home and additional measures for the control of contagious and infectious diseases, and for the protection of public health and welfare, and for the related purposes adopted, uh, March 24th, the year 2020. Uh, let me ask if you will please put your phones on mute. Um, uh, we have, uh, Dr. Blaine Muir, uh, who is on the call, uh, who will preface, uh, this discussion, uh, Dr. Muir.
Uh, good morning, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can.
Good morning.
Yes, sir, we can.
Okay, uh, well, good morning, thanks for having me. Uh, I guess first of all, since this was sort of impromptu for me, uh, Mr. Mayor, would you let me know exactly where I can go here? Because I have lots of things I could say.
Uh, yes, sir, uh, just state to the board, you know, how important, uh, the stay-home order that we adopted several days ago is important for the citizens, and, and, and talk about, uh, this disease, this pandemic that we're facing, and how it can impact Natchez Adams County and the greater Missoula area.
Sure, you know, first of all, I know everyone on the board and has been glued to the TV and to the news press, uh, to their, to their computer, and they see what's going on around the world, and then, of course, looking at our major epicenters from coast to coast. Uh, and, uh, let me just tell you first and foremost that we are no different than them. We're just a mi- we're just a microcosm of what's going on there, and we're, uh, we're on, any day now, we could have a, an upclick in major cases that could overwhelm our hospital and put us in a major situation. And, and saying that, uh, we're there now, and the reason I say that is this, this, uh, disease, of course, you also have read, read and understand that New Orleans, which is not very far away, and many of us are there often, and have been there since Mardi Gras, uh, is, is the new epicenter, and it's, uh, and unfortunately, colleagues I have there describe it as a war zone. Uh, the main thing that's going on everywhere, and you all are all aware with the term PPE now, which is personal protective equipment, that's the, sort of the tip of the iceberg in our locally, you know, I, uh, let me just say this, I, I, I run both my internal medicine clinic with my partners, and as well as we run our, the Natchez after-hours clinic. We've, we've made a decision just a few weeks ago that that was gonna be our main, uh, when we decided we were gonna be a, a, sort of a testing, uh, a, a testing clinic and provide that testing here, uh, we, we got our, uh, got our, our act together downstairs, and we made sure that our, our ability to perform the test, protecting our employees, and protecting our nurse practitioners, and protecting the public was set in place, and that's what we've been testing. Uh, if you look at the state, this is state, uh, uh, website today, and you look at the numbers in Adams County, you will be fooled, it says, it says two cases. Well, first of all, let me tell you, that's wrong, and we figured out why it's wrong after many calls, uh, but right now, the hos- just to let you know where we are right now, I had two positive cases yesterday that were relayed to me. I still have about forty tests I'm waiting on from just the clinic alone, the hospital is, is waiting on several themselves. We have three patients confirmed on ventilators in our hospital. So you can do the math, the two on the site are wrong. We, we found out that some of the labs that we have been referring to initially that were recommended to us are overwhelmed, and they're not, they're actually not reporting positive tests. So, you, you can see right now, you can triple, at least triple the cases we know of as of this morning than what's on the site. And I'm just gonna tell you right now, there are several hundred cases in this town, you know, you know, you know the math. Ninety-five percent of folks that get, are exposed to this and become positive are not gonna be hospitalized. A good majority of those folks, that are younger folks, healthier folks, may not have any symptoms, or they'll be, they'll just think it's, uh, they may just think it's a low-grade fever or just, uh, seasonal allergies, which is obviously complicating symptoms right now. Uh, but the five percent is all it takes to overwhelm our hospital, and we have every bed that's been allocated with special conditions, reverse isolation rooms to try to protect the, uh, the environment of the room and protect our staff. Every one of those beds is full with someone of high suspicion for COVID-19, several of them with significant breathing difficulties that, uh, by the way, you can go from, and I know you've seen, you've heard the anecdotal stories, it's happened in our hospital in the last few days. Somebody, one day before, that I'll, I'll, I'll maybe taking care of, or another doctor in town taking care of, that maybe home, we have isolated, maybe just has a fever, has no shortness of breath at all, uh, six hours later, then they're, they're in the emergency room getting intubated. This is how fast this thing turns on our folks. It's, uh, especially if they're in the middle of their infection time. Uh, day eight or so is the, sort of the, the time of, of symptoms. But the, uh, that's the problem, once they get on a vent, as you guys are hearing, these patients are sick, 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 they require the highest level of the ventilation, and these people are not getting off the vent, e- even if they're gonna survive, they're gonna be on the ventilators for up to two weeks. So that ventilator is taken. Uh, our hospital has limited ventilators, just like across the country, and, uh, if we get an uptick in more cases, and unfortunately, the healthy folks in this town that are walking around with it unknowingly, if they get comfortable, if we say to them, "Okay, we're not, don't have that many ca- cases, we must be immune in Natchez", and we start going about any normalcy of, uh, and getting out and about, this thing is gonna have a huge upsurge, and unfortunately, the folks that are fifty and above have comorbid conditions that put them at greater risk for immune compromise, are gonna come in the hospital, they're gonna get, they're gonna get extremely sick, and many, and, and certainly the numbers bear out, on average, for every hundred people that get exposed and get COVID, five, five of those people are gonna be hospitalized, and about a third to half of those people are gonna be on a vent, and then that, then all bets are off then. So we're right there, we have not even come close to a peak here in Natchez. There's, uh, if you look at all the models, we're looking at three or four weeks down the road for, for that to happen across Mississippi. Maybe ours could be, uh, 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 much closer to that, two or three weeks possibly, but we're just guessing. It's all about what we do, and I, and the mayor knows, I've been preaching it, doctors in town have been preaching it, I've talked to the, our, our doctors that are in, in the ICU are, you know, working night and day. Here's the other problem, you hear about PPEs that I just mentioned. You know, the CEO and I talked this morning, uh, we were, the, uh, the PPA, the PPA, uh, I'm sorry, the PPE situation in the hospital is if we ask today, we're okay, that means gloves, masks, gowns, all the protective gear to protect our employees is, are okay right, we're okay right now, but we don't know, if we get an upclick in cases in the next two, three weeks, the problem is, is the, is mu- much as they're saying they're producing, that you can see with all these, all these cities around the country, they need more and more and more. And, and I guess you guys understand, Natchez isn't a, is gonna be on the priority list. Uh, and, uh, and then the other thing that people don't think about is we're, these people that are being intubated and people who are having to treat, we're, we're now starting to run low on medications. So as medications, you don't think about, sedation medicines, that we need to keep these patients on the vent and comfortable. They're eating this product up, and now, now it's become a national shortage on, on that line. Uh, you, I know you heard, you hear about all these medicines we're anecdotally trying, trying to treat folks with, the hydroxychloroquine, the, the Z-Packs, and all these products that are for other uses. Well, those are getting eaten up across the country because people are, are panicking, and people are scared, and certainly, it's a try-anything moment with this disease, since we don't have a cure, we don't have a vaccine. So all these layers of concern we have, inpatient and outpatient, are telling us right now that the only way to continue to confine this and slow the spread of this is to keep having local restraints on, on, on contact. This thing isn't just passing around because you walk in front of a cough. The majority of people that are coming down with this unknowingly are contacting surfaces, and I fear at places, you know, certainly two weeks ago, it was at restaurants, it was at bars, it was in public, it was if you got contacted and you touched somebody else, if you're not cleaning hands and cleaning surfaces, you know, you guys are read, how long it lives on plastic and on metal, and, and others, uh, even on cardboard, it can live for hours, days, and we have to continue the process of hygiene and, and social distancing. And I could talk for another hour, I'm gonna stop, and, and if there's any questions or concerns, then I'll, I'll go on, Minister Mayor.
Uh, thank you, uh, Dr. Muir. Um, did any of the board members have a question for Dr. Muir?
I do.
Any of the...
Doctor.
Uh, yes, uh, yes, Ms. Frazier?
This, this is Alderman Frazier. Uh, so, you're saying all parks and recreation should be, should be closed, correct?
Uh, you make, parks and recreation?
Yes.
Well, look, now certainly, I would say that any, uh, I'm, I'm following what the CDC is recommending, what the government recommending, I would say that right now, certainly all, all venues that are at risk for gatherings of more than ten people, and certainly are, have ventilation risks and, and contact risks, certainly should be managed and closed. A park or a, an open space where... A park or a, uh, an open space where social distancing can be practiced is certainly not something that I would put on my priority list uh, for closure necessarily, just if it's at easy access. I mean, across the country, even in New York, they're allowing people to walk through Central Park. It's just that, uh, they, uh, to get their exercise, but, uh, but they are certainly, uh, strongly and, and strictly enforcing social distancing and certainly any, any businesses that require contact and close quarters or gatherings.
Oh, okay. I, 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 because I, I want to thank the mayor because yesterday I, I, uh, in my water, I had to, it was about thirty or forty, I'm playing basketball. And I called the mayor and we shit down those parks and stuff. But I was talking to the mayor and he said that, uh, he's playing golf and that was, uh, they could play golf. But I was kind of like scared about being down Dunkin' Bar, playing golf. What, what, what do you think?
Well, I, I agree. A basketball game is probably one of the worst things, worst things. I love basketball. I, I, but, uh, there's no way anybody should be on a basketball court right now sweating, sweating on each other, bumping into each other. That's a, that's a complete absolute no-no. I don't care if the numbers are ten or less. It, it, uh, the last time I, uh, uh, checked, you have to have ten people to play a game. So, uh, no, I mean, unless you're playing a three-on-three, but that's just, that's just read between the lines. Absolutely. That's a contact. That's a, that's a passing, that's passing, uh, you know, unfortunately, uh, uh, body bodily, uh, lick, uh, surfaces and liquids to each other, that, that's, that's certainly should be a no-no. I certainly, a go- a individual golf game, if you're practicing di- social distancing and you're, uh, sanitizing your clubs, you're not going into the clubhouse, touching all over counters and shaking hands and, and everything like that. I think that that's, you know, again, it's all how we handle that. But that certainly would be something that I would think would be, would be very acceptable for you to get out into nature, be away from everybody. And if you want to, if you want to punish yourself hitting that little white ball.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
I told, I, I talked to the man, like I said, he took that accident on it and he closed all parks. I'd say he explained the same thing. I, I appreciate your, your expertise, Doc. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, yes, Ms. Smith.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I had one question. I know we, we closed down the, um, parks with the equipment, you know, where kids could get on the playground equipment and then pass, you know, the germs would stay on there. And I know the, um, golf has been open, which, you know, Dr. Muir is saying is okay. But I know, are the carts allowed right now? Because I don't know that we can practice social distancing with the carts. Are they still operating? And first of all, I want to thank Dr. Muir for coming. I texted you and I know that it was short notice, but you did wonderful job. Thank you so much.
Well, I just want to, and I just want to make sure everybody continues to preach this word and, 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 and understand, understand the significance of it. I know you all are, are doing your jobs because you, you want the best for this community. And, and, uh, and certainly my, my doctors are, uh, I'm, I'm representing my doctors here. My, my doctors in the hospital, my doctors on the front line, my nurse practitioners, my, and all my nurses, uh, they, uh, they're, if, 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 you see how they're working across the, across and, you know, and, and working their butts off on TV. I promise you, they're working as hard or harder here for, for our patients here. And, and so please support them. Uh, just the last thing I want to say is, is, you know, because of that la- uh, we continue to talk to whoever you know you can talk to to support our C- our CEO and our hospital as well in terms of making sure that we get the medicines we need to take care of those patients. So thank y'all for having me.
Uh, thank you, uh, Dr. Muir. Yes, uh, Alderman Mathis?
Yeah, before Dr. Muir leaves, I've, I've been noticing, I think, because the only place I've been is to the grocery store. Uh, should our, um, people, should the people who work in the grocery store who, uh, wait to check out, should they have gloves on? I'm just asking a question.
Well, so, uh, it's a great question, uh, because, you know, when I go, you know, when we all go to the grocery store now, I mean, I'm sure you guys are thinking about everything they're touching and realizing that this, uh, this, this, this virus could be on any surface. The main, the main issue with gloves is that certainly, uh, it would be ideal if a checkout person were changing gloves for each individual checkout person, uh, and cleaning the, uh, conveyor. I will tell you, uh, that I, when I go to the grocery store, uh, I don't even put my, my food on the conveyor. I, I, I actually reach over and pu- and pass it, pass it through myself. But we, uh, the main thing is that it, the, the main thing for sure is that we, I would encourage the, for, for, for that checkout person to clean their hands thoroughly between clients. And if they were wearing gloves, they should change them between clients. It certainly doesn't help to wear, just have gloves on just for the sake of having gloves. But for, for you checking out, for you checking out, once you put your stuff through there and got it, get them in bags, make sure, the main issue is that your hands need to be sanitized immediately. And make sure that when you put, when you put those bags in your car and you get home and, and you should probably unload that, that, those, that, uh, uh, the, the, that food cautiously, clean every part of it. Don't let those bags in the house, throw those bags away immediately. Uh, really just have to practice incredible hand hygiene when you're out picking things up at the store.
Okay, um.
Thank you.
I would like to thank, uh, Dr. Muir for coming on this morning because they are extremely busy, uh, because of this pandemic. And I, as mayor, on behalf of the board of Alderman and the citizens, I just want to say thank you to all practitioners, all of the medical practitioners that are out there working, even down to the custodial staff that are constantly sanitizing our medical facilities. I mean, these are all first responders on this pandemic. They're out there risking themselves, family, their, their families at risk. So I would like to, uh, thank Dr. Muir. And I strongly urge this board, please, whatever we do, please let's not dilute our resolutions that we adopted for this city. This pandemic is serious and we are trying to reduce the spread. We're trying to prevent a, we're trying to prevent a spike from occurring in our little community. So I implore the board, please, please, let's keep this as rigid as possible so that people can know the seriousness of this disease. Okay, so, uh, there it is. So, uh.
Thank you very much, Mayor. And I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and get off the call unless anybody else has anything to say to me. I'll be, uh, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Dr. Muir.
What we missed? Folks on the ventilator will be there for two weeks. I think there's three on the vent right now. They're very, very sick and they're running out of fans, et cetera. He said that before we got off.
Okay, thank you. Um, um, all right, uh, yes, um.
Who was that, Mr. Mayor?
Was that you? I don't know. I don't know who that was.
That was a, it was a caller that came in with unmuted mic. Sorry about that. I got him.
Okay, okay. Um, all right, so. Yes, uh, Mr. Dillard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the reasoning that I requested this put on the agenda has produced more fruit, more information than, than I thought possible. And I do want to thank you for, or Sarah, uh, Alderman and Sarah Carter-Smith for having Dr. Muir, uh, come on and, and again advise us to the severity of the situation that we're in. And I will say that this morning, I was greatly relieved in reading the article in the Natchez Democrat as they are keeping the public and all of us updated on the status of, of the, um, virus and the businesses that it affects. And, um, to, to that end, I am satisfied that the retailers who are taking the necessary precautions of social distancing and not congregating ten or more people and uh, are complying with the intent and the purpose of this resolution. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, thank you. Uh, yes, Ms. Frazier?
Before we, before we get, before we adjourn, I would like to say to all the rest of Alderman, if you see something going on in your ward, please call, call something, the mayor, someone and take corrective action because, and I want to thank the mayor again for taking this action as quick, action as soon as possible when I saw him in reference to kids playing basketball. And he did a great job in shutting down and all, all those parks and, and wards who are closed as of now. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Frazier. All right, so, um.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Mathis.
Okay, if I may, I want to, um, my, my, my whole thing is that I'm glad that I did see the resolution because that first, the first topic that I got did not have, uh, for a period of fifteen days in it. And then, um, once we did do everything that we did do the other night, I pulled it up on the, I guess, must've been Tuesday night, on the computer. So I, I, with what we've done and the amendments that we've made, I think we're in good shape. We just wanted to make, the only other question I had was to the, uh, city attorney. Now, any of these, and this is just a question, so everybody calm down because everybody, we have to get clarification on everything we're doing. So does any of the, have you researched Mr. Attorney, uh, the resolutions carefully enough so that any re-? Well, let me ask this question. How, uh, do you know how relief will be hea- uh, handled to our citizens who have businesses? Do we have any input? Are you, are you kind of channeling that to see if in fact they do pass a bill? How that will be handled and if it will be handled as we've handled, um, uh, situations before in hurricane disasters where the city had its own, uh, way of, of a- accessing money for the, for the city and the county had its own way of accessing money for the county? Uh, do you understand what I'm asking, Mr. Frazier?
Right, right. Um, and, and I'll, I'll comment also, Ms. Mathis, on that. Um, I've given the charge to all department directors, uh, for the city of Natchez to keep everything well documented during this pandemic. So that if there is any money that's going to come down the channel to local government in terms of, uh, you know, things that we had to do because of this pandemic, we will have the documentation in place. Also, in the Economic Development, uh, Council meeting that we had, had Monday, uh, Chandler Russ, uh, Debbie Hudson with the chamber, uh, they have all been in contact with all the small businesses, throughout the community, uh, getting the necessary, uh, forms filled out and getting all of that filed over there in emergency management so that when, uh, money comes down, relief money comes down, uh, we are ahead of the game, that we've got everything in place. So we have been working on that. I'll turn it over to you, Bob, if you have any further comments on our question.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, thank you for that. I would also request that everything that you've done and, uh, Chandler's done be published in, 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 um, you know, I, I know we online right now, but hopefully in the Democrat where that, where those businesses, in, in just in case you miss somebody or they miss somebody that, that it's published in the Democrat and the Bluff City Post, uh, along with it being online so that they'll know. I'm glad to have this and I would like for you to send us out a statement because that way if people contact us, we can tell them, you know, uh, uh, who to go to, what to see, who to see, give them a number to call. I got a call yesterday from one business and I referred them, uh, to Bob. So I just need to know what to do because people are going to call the, the people, the, the, the people that they feel like they can ask a question too. And that's why I'm asking questions so that I'm, I'm giving information back to the public that's the cor- in the correct manner.
Okay, and that's a very good point and I will take care of that. We'll get that disseminated to all the board members of, uh, where the points of contact and how to fill out that paperwork. So yes, ma'am, I'm glad you brought that out. We will take care of it. And we will request for the media that's online, if you would, uh, publish that so that the public, the general public can know, especially small businesses, uh, because this pandemic economically has really impacted a lot of our small businesses. So yes, and I, I thank you for bringing that out, uh, Ms. Mathis. Um, so is there anything else before we adjourn?
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, yes, Ms. Smith.
I, I just wanted to clarify, just so there wasn't any confusion, because the, the golf, the golf pro shop is closed. There are no carts going around the golf course. That's correct, right? Cause I got a text, someone was asking.
That, that is correct. I, I handled that, uh, two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago? Okay, thank you very much.
And there is, there is no tennis that's going on because a tennis ball can spread this virus. So we shut down tennis.
Yeah, I think some people just saw people driving down the road yesterday from John R. Duncan on the, on the course. And I guess they were just individual people on there using their own, you know, bags and walking. So that, that's why I got the text.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Okay, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn if this is prerogative of the board.
Mr. Mayor. I just have a comment.
Yes, Ms. Clark.
Can you hear me?
Uh, yes, Ms. Clark. Let's, let's, uh, who is this?
Felicia Irving.
Okay, so let's make sure, you know, that we don't deviate from the agenda. Make sure that it's germane to the second item or to the first item. Okay.
This is the second item.
Okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that I, I received an email from Donna and I think everyone else did pertaining to a manufacturing company and the way that they were handling, um, social dista- distancing, distancing in their, uh, workplace. So I didn't know whether or not you had addressed that, so I just wanted to bring to your attention. Did anyone else receive that email? And it's out in the open. Okay, all right.
Thank you so much, uh, Alderman Irving for bringing that to my attention. Thank you. Uh, is there anything else? Uh, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, let me.
Uh, yes, uh, city attorney?
I'm just going to make one comment since, uh, George directed it to me with respect to any information that I've been aware of, uh, pertaining to the legislation. And I am on an email thread and I, I received an email yesterday that there's a website that's being set up that will break down the current legislation and kind of give us some not, a synopsis of what the different businesses are entitled to. So when, when, when I get that information, I'll, uh, try to get that out to the board members.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob. I appreciate that. And thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make sure, I'm, you know, I, I, I wanted to make sure that when we call, people call us, we're giving them the right information and that the people know that there is information out there that they can access. That was my, that's my whole thing. But thank you all for that information.
We'll get that out. Help Dustin to send that out to all the board members. Uh, and, um, thank you, Bob. Uh, if there's nothing else, a, a motion, uh, to adjourn will be in order.
It's been moved.
It's moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Irving. Okay, it's not debatable. Uh, Alderman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Frazier?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Smith?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Irving?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Davis?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Dillard?
Aye.
Please be safe. Spread the word. Please be safe. God bless each of you. God bless Natchez. Bye-bye.